We'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Roll call.
Colpak?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Turnberg?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Tonight, we're highlighting the work of Fargo-Cass Public Health. Some people may not be aware that Fargo-Cass Public Health is the city Fargo agency that serves Fargo, West Fargo, Cass County, and surrounding counties. It's funded through a combination of federal, state, and local funds. Fargo-Cass County Health Team plays a critical role in providing essential health services, leading public health preparedness, and promoting wellness initiatives for our residents. We're constantly looking out for the most vulnerable citizens, partnering with schools and organizations to build a healthier future for the whole community. Thank you for all you do to make Fargo region a safe and healthy place to call home. We will now share a video that spotlights the work that Fargo-Cass Public Health does.
The mission of Public Health is to prevent injury and illnesses and to promote health as well as to protect our communities throughout Cass County. So Fargo-Cass provides a large array of services, and we have an equally large array of funding streams that make those services available to the public. That will include our federal, state, and county funders, as well as fee-for-services, grants, and the city. WIC and Public Health Nursing are impactful programs for young families during the first years of life, providing support and food resources for families. The WIC program helps women, infants, and children, families, stay healthy by providing free nutritious foods, tips on eating well, breastfeeding support, connections to community resources. It's all about giving eligible families the support they need to grow strong and to thrive. The nursing team further supports individuals later in life through our Fit and Strong Program and home visits for our adult home health clients. The immunization program in our Public Health Nursing Division works all year long, both at Fargo-Cass Public Health, as well as through community outreach to provide opportunities for community members to receive important immunizations. The work of our Harm Reduction Division implements evidence-based policies and practices across a variety of our programs, which include the Gladys Spray Shelter, global and street outreach, homeless engagement assistance response team, and our downtown engagement center. If you enjoy dining at your favorite restaurant, getting a tattoo from a local artist, or beating the heat by swimming in a public pool, rest assured that our Environmental Health Division is behind-the-scenes licensing and regulating these types of environments to provide peace of mind for our community. The health promotion team members serve our community through tobacco prevention policy and advocacy work. They're also actively engaged in various healthy living initiatives, including mental health, substance abuse, physical activity, nutrition, the prevention of cancer, and childhood obesity. Our Emergency Preparedness Division is ready to respond and supports our community by providing training and support for long-term care facilities, group homes, and shelters to ensure residents remain safe. The Clinic at Fargo-Cass Public Health provides various services for men and women, including reproductive health, STD and STI counseling, testing and treatment, immunizations, and screening for breast and cervical cancers. The clinic staff participate in many outreach events throughout Cass County. The North Dakota Ryan White and Women's Way programs are also based at Fargo-Cass Public Health. As part of our fee-for-services, we work with people where they're at, and that is if they can't pay for the entire visit, we can make payments available and just whatever their income bracket is to help cover the services that they need. In addition to meeting people where they're at financially, we also want to meet them where they're at physically. That's going to include meeting them at schools for immunizations or providing school nursing in addition to our adult nursing division going into homes for home health care. We also provide services via telehealth for our WIC and clinic services. Why do I believe in Public Health? And for me, it was having a long history of being on the treatment side of mental health care specifically and in the hospital settings that I've worked within. I really felt the need to get in front of the issues and knowing that we could continue to provide treatment and more people would come and continue to receive treatment, I really wanted to see what was in front of the need for treatment and to see if we could really save those people from having to come down that path. And so for me, the prevention work that Public Health offers is imperative, and working towards promoting that and seeking positive health, I think that is what really drives people towards that Public Health mission, truly to prevent, promote, and protect our
Thank you, Jen. That was a nice video. Appreciate it. Tonight, we're presenting the Fargo Rising Star Award to recipient chosen by the leadership of Fargo-Cass Public Health. The award goes to Mike Handlick. Mike has served Fargo-Cass Public Health for five years. He started as a seasonal emergency management intern in 2020. The next year, he was hired by the Environmental Health Division as an office associate. In this role, Mike handles high volumes of phone calls and in-person inquiries and provides residents with information about environmental health programs, licensing, and regulation. He resolves over eighty, eight hundred nuisance complaints each year, conducts annual billing for one thousand seven hundred licenses, and assists with documenting three thousand five hundred annual health inspections. Mike is known for his integrity, positive attitude, strong work ethic, and outstanding customer service. He consistently volunteers to take on additional responsibilities, provides impeccable attention to detail, and is a valued member of Fargo-Cass Public Health. Congratulations, Mike. Your commitment to public service makes you Fargo Rising Star. Now, the other thing we had going on last week was, and we're trying to figure out who gave the most blood, police or fire, Morehead or Fargo? So I have Kimberly Voselteig from the Red Cross, and she is going to explain to us the different trophies that are out there tonight. And then I think we have some fire policemen from Morehead as well. I see Chuck is here as well to represent Morehead. And we have the police chief and the fire chief here as well. If they'd all come to the podium, please, we'd like to give the presentations. Yep? You think you're going to win, don't you? Probably have to get you a mic here. She have a mic? Does it work?
Yeah, yeah, we can all come back up, yeah.
Who's carrying the trophies? Oh, I am.
Jared has them, and then Chief has one.
I'm online.
Where are we going? I don't even know where we're going.
You got your speech ready?
I have a little bit, yes. So I'm Kimberly Voselteig, Executive Director of the Merrick Red Cross Response for Eastern North Dakota and Northwest Minnesota. We are excited to have a long-running Battle of the Badges here in the Fargo side. In this last year, we did expand over to the Morehead side, doing Battle of the Badges, but also we created Battle of the Cities, getting a little bit more fun to it. So this year, I haven't even gotten the results yet, but this year on the Morehead side for the Battle of the Badges, Fire took it. Fire took the first battle.[580.16][580.16](applause) And we do it on a, you can't, he's peeking. We do it on a donation basis, so if you donate your, if you donate blood, you do get a vote. So on that one, it was twenty-four to twenty, Fire taking it. Jared has the Fargo side, so I'm going to do the Fargo one here. Denise, do you want to hold, grab it from Jared, and then in between Gary and, let's see, Chief of Fire, Chief of Police?
Okay.
So this year's battle on the Fargo side, we had a really great showing. I think both, both blood drives were, had a great showing, but somehow Gary got the whole recruit team of the Metro Fire to show up, and he ended up taking it twenty to ten, or thirty to ten for Fire. So Fire did come back this year, and they won.[634.79][634.79](applause) They reclaimed their spot. And then on the city side, so we have Deputy Chief, Jeff, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Chuck Hendrickson, do you want to come up here with, I'm going to step aside. Mayor Mahoney. So this is the first inaugural year of the Battle of the Cities, so just taking a little bit of time and really presenting and giving back to those that save, that are jumping in our spots every single day, saving lives, our first responders. I haven't opened it yet.
Come on now.
Okay. Throughout the whole entire two days, we had eighty-four blood donations made, so I want to make sure you all know that eighty-four blood donations made with thirty-six new blood donors. So that's an incredible feat within twelve hours.
We actually got locked in.
I, I haven't seen it. Yeah, they, they locked it up. So Jared, are you ready? What if I drop it? They even...
Can I pick the one?
I don't even know. Oh.
Ooh.
Oh. Morehead, forty-three, Fargo, forty-one.
Whoa.[716.23][716.23](applause)
Congratulations to Morehead.[721.51][721.51](applause)
If you need to take a question at the Pfizer World, is this part of the conference or something? Congratulations.
Thank you all for showing up for the first responders and for their Merrick Red Cross blood drives. This will be an annual battle, so these are your winners, and thank you so much. Congratulations.[755.32][755.32](applause)
Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting and the August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five special meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through twenty-eight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearings, special assessments for skyway maintenance fees. Steve Bragg to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Annually, we do an assessment of the skyway maintenance fees, and this assessment covers things like the cleaning, the electric, the heat, the air conditioning in the skyway, as well as we're starting to try to build up a little pot again so that we can replace carpet and do some of the wall coverings. The last year, the assessment was a hundred and sixty thousand, and we've repeated that again this year. I think the plan is to do the same assessment for about five years, and that will give us time to save up so that we can do the, the wall coverings and the carpeting.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in regards to these assessments or maintenance fees? Is there anyone present who wants to talk about skyway maintenance fees? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing, special assessments for nuisance abatement fees, snow removal. Steve Bragg to explain.
Yes, Mayor. So the snow removal costs, when it's done on a complaint-driven basis, we go out, we take pictures beforehand, we remove the snow, take pictures afterwards. We do send out a billing through our accounts receivable process, and when we get into the middle of summer and if it hasn't been paid yet, then we switch over to the assessment process. So there was about seven thousand dollars remaining unpaid, and that's what we have on our list. That's all I have.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak about the snow removal assessment? Anyone present who wants to speak about the snow removal assessment? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Strand.
Thank you. Steve, I'm just curious with the snow removal abavements. In our social services funds, we had about nearly fifty thousand dollars for snow removal for people that couldn't. Is, this isn't the same, is it?
No, this is, this is just a homeowner that, or a, you know, a rental property or something like that where they're not taking care of the property like they should be.
And the other program, explain it briefly if you could.
Well, I think that falls under Nicole and planning, but my understanding is that property owners can apply for assistance to, to remove snow on their, on their property.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item thirty-one, special substance unpaid utilities. Much longer list.
This is a long list. We're trying to get our, trying to get ahead of this a little bit with our new meter project going in also. And so with this list, now we remember, we have areas of town that are served by Caserole Water, and we do not have the ability to turn off the water. It's, water is not our debt on those, and so those properties that are in the city of Fargo City limits but are serviced by Caserole Water, they have other city services that need to be paid, and they are billed monthly through the utility billing process. And a number of those people do not pay theirs, and so this is how we collect those assessments. In addition to that, we've switched, or we put an emphasis on rental properties a number of years ago, and we've pretty much worked through all of the landlords now understand that they are responsible for their utilities at their rental properties. And so those are two of the areas. We have some others where getting access to the, to the turnoff valves is, is difficult. Either they have like a car parked over it or different things like that, and so those are on the list also. Storm sewer is, you know, obviously, we, we bill for storm sewer services, and if somebody chooses not to pay that, you know, we, we have no method of collecting other than through this assessment process.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak about special assessments for unpaid utilities? Anyone wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Strand.
Thank you. Steve, I'm just curious with regard to the bigger picture. A few years ago, we raised these, these costs to the consumer, maybe substantially, I'm not sure, but are you seeing that trickle into how many are unpaid or the collectibles growing equivalently or?
No, I, I don't think that's, that's the case at all. I think it's, we have some property owners that just choose not to, not to pay their, their utilities, and it's difficult to stay, to, you know, be turning everybody off that's not paying them, and so I, I think that that's just, just kind of the way it is, I guess. It's, you know, people are choosing not to pay them, and, and our collection method now is through the property taxes. I will add that when we sent out this notice, you know, when the property owners got their notice, we've seen a substantial increase in payments because people don't necessarily want that to go on there. This three hundred and eighteen thousand that was on there was the first assessment that, or notice that went out. Now, we will, before we convert this to an assessment, we double-check to make sure that, you know, payments are made and, and that type of thing, so. I don't know if there's other questions?
No, thank you.
Roll call, was there a question, Mr. Turner? Your mic was there, okay.
Pepcorn?
Roll call vote.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing, application for transfer ownership license, class F alcoholic beverage license in Phila Fiesto Mexican-American Grill, doing business as Casa Mexica Curia Express, located at twenty-five eleven Christian Lane South.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is an existing business. The class F is full alcohol, but it does require food sales. It does not allow them to have a physical bar in the location, and what we're doing here is just adding one owner. There was, this was individually owned, and he brought on a partner. We went through the background check and through our normal process, there were no issues in the background check, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval from the Liquor Control Board.
Is there anyone present who wishes to discuss the transfer of this ownership? Anybody who want to discuss this ownership? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve. Item thirty-three, Breckie Sixty-Fourth Avenue Edition, recommended by Planning Commission on four one twenty-five, zoning change from a single-dwelling residential to a single-dwelling residential SR four, first reading the rezoning ordinance and the plot of the Breckie Sixty-Fourth Avenue Edition. Donald Kress to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress of the Department of Planning and Development. Note, this item includes the, an ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office. Our first, our only item here tonight, as the mayor stated, is Breckie Sixty-Fourth Avenue Edition. It is located here along Sixty-Fourth Avenue Southwest of University Drive. Here's Davies High School down here, here's the water tower that says Fargo on one side and Caserole Water on the other, and this large property here is a city-owned property that is often informally referred to as Borrow Pit Park. These are, it's a four point six-two acre property, so we're just looking from the four corners here. The property has been cleared of everything that's on it, and they are in the process of lomering it, that is, to meet the flood requirements. They own the property, and so they can, the owner owns the property, so they can start this work now. Just a few different views of the site here. It's interestingly surrounded on one side by a water tower and a cell tower, in the back by that city-owned property, on the east side by some large lot residences. Here's the, here's the edge of one large lot residence here, and then, of course, Sixty-Fourth Avenue is an arterial with some residences across the street. Here's just looking down Sixty-Fourth Avenue, the subject property is over here. Here are the residences across the street, and this shot here is on the south side. There has been much discussion about how this trail goes through here, so the grass, the trees, and the trail are the cities. They're managed by the Park District, but they're the cities, and the subject property ends here where the, where the dirt meets the grass. The zoning here is SR two, single-dwelling residential, and the proposed zoning is SR four, single-dwelling residential, which is intended to accommodate this plat, so taking there were once two houses here on large lots. This is proposed to be platted into thirty lots that are zoned SR four. Again, these lots would meet the minimum development standards of the SR four zone, and access is provided by a, an internal private drive here, which we do occasionally. They will take access off Sixty-Fourth Avenue South, but the easement and the roadway and all that is internal to it, the utilities, will be maintained by the development, not by the city. That's a pretty busy-looking plat here. This is, those lots laid out, so you can see them more clearly, and then the dashed blue line is the easement that goes through there. It's a thirty-foot-wide easement. At the Planning Commission, as it states in your staff report, the Planning Commission was adamant that a sidewalk should be provided, which was not in the original design. So here is a graphic prepared by the project engineer. This darker edge here is the sidewalk. It's four and a half foot wide sidewalk, standard city width sidewalk that will go all the way around the subject property. And then this shows the approximate house layouts. Your, your commission is not approving this exact layout tonight of the houses, but this is the idea that's behind it there, and these, the developer can provide more details on the houses. Commissioners, you received a communication included in your packet regarding concerns about a fence along the south side of the property line here. This is a graphic provided by the applicant. The, the neighbor there who was, sent that letter, Planning Department staff and the developer met last Friday, had some discussion, and the result of that is a, the developers plan to build a fence here. It's a steel-reinforced fence along the south property line between the residences here. This down here is the applicant's, or the developer's explanation of how that fence was going to work. We did pass this along to the neighbor, and he said that this, if this is, comes together like this, this would satisfy his concerns, and staff will document this, the developer's obligation to build this fence. There are a couple of easements included in your packet. This just shows what they are here. No, back one. This, this sidewalk here connects to the shared-use path. This, again, was another recommendation of the Planning Commission, and so that's, requires an easement off city property, across city property, and there's also a stormwater pipe easement that will connect to the, to the detention base in there from the subdivision. The applicant's representatives, Michael Breckie of Breckie Customs Homes, Casey Jackson of J and Contracting, and Brian Patengale of Houston Engineering are with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Your packet did include a couple of public comment letters, and there may be some neighbors here also this evening who wish to address the commission. That, the Planning Commission's recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to talk about this zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a mo? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Don. Public hearing, hearing a proposed increase of passenger fares and fare structure adjustment for map bus fixed routes and paratransit effective January first, two thousand twenty-six. Julie Bolloman to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. There's actually two separate hearings tonight. This first one is about the proposed fare increase, fare structure adjustment, and then the second one will be in regards to proposed route changes. So starting out with the potential fare increase and fare structure included in your packet, this is information that we gathered from agencies, transit agencies, that are comparable to the City of Fargo Transit Service, so Grand Forks, Bismarck, Minot, St. Cloud, Mankato, Rochester, and Sioux Falls, and it demonstrates what their fare structures are currently. So looking at some of this, we determined that perhaps our fare structure is a bit complicated, so that was one of the things we brought forward to the map bus coordination committee at the same time that we brought forward a proposal to raise cash-only fares. This does not impact the past fares. So Grand Forks in January, actually, I think it was in April of twenty-five, raised their fares to the highlighted yellow on the screen, and they have not seen a significant decrease in ridership, which is always a concern. So when we looked at other structures and trends in the agencies, we concluded, like I said, it might have been a little bit more complicated than it needed to be, so simplifying it would probably be advantageous to us as well as the riders. A typical impact in the transit industry is generally there is a decrease in ridership, although the magnitude of that is a little difficult. We forecast a ten percent decrease based on some of the industry averages and general findings that are part of our industry standards, and what we determined was that the only thing that, like I said, we're, we're proposing to increase is, is the cash fare, and adding a seven-day pass, removing a fourteen-day pass, which rarely, if ever, gets purchased. And so what we were proposing is going from a dollar fifty adult cash fare to two dollars. Discounted fare, which is for elderly, disabled, and youth, would be so, going from seventy-five cents to a dollar. The seven-day pass would be ten dollars across the board, and you can see that for paratransit, complimentary paratransit that's provided anytime you have a fixed route, that fare would go from three dollars for for one trip to four dollars for one trip. It can never be more than double the adult cash fare that you charge on a fixed route. And that would also impact any guests going along with the riders. All riders that are eligible to have a personal care attendant, they will continue to ride at no cost. This would just be guests that would be going with the rider. These are some of the metrics, looking at the price elasticity of demand. Really, it can be very riveting information, I understand. But historically, when you look at increases, there is, has generally been a decrease in ridership, which of course would, would impact our anticipated level of fare revenue that we would be collecting. And it's based on income sensitivity, availability of alternatives, if, if folks have other alternatives to, alternatives to take where they're going, that could impact it. And then our demographic factors and geographics. So just wanted to throw that in, in there for you. Our anticipated, and this does take into account the ten percent decrease in ridership, would be approximately hundred ninety-six thousand additional dollars. However, if the second set of information that we're bringing forward for route changes, depending, we're not bringing those actually for approval, just, this is just the public hearing after this one. Any of those adjustments could impact projected revenue. We did bring it to the map bus coordination committee. We discussed the proposal on April sixteen. May twenty-one, they unanimously approved the proposal to increase, again, cash-only fares. So the recommended motion is on the screen. I do know that there has been some public input provided ahead of time on cash fares, which were in your packet as well. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Julie? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. Julie, I'm just curious. I think it would be, if I remember right, you and others like Commissioner Kolpak and others lobbied the state legislature pretty significantly this last session.
Yes.
And if I remember right, there was a, an investment that, that came from them that is, I think, new, I believe, to the mass transit. But wasn't there also a sentiment that we need to, I think, step up the contribution from the riders? Or am I wrong on that? Help me understand that.
You are correct, Commissioner Strand. Yes, the legislators that we spoke with during, during our trips out there and conversations, they almost to a single person asked, have we increased our fares? And if we have, when was that? And what has been the impact on that? Cash fares, we have not increased since two thousand nine. So that was one of the recommendations they made, they, as legislators made. And we did get additional funding from the state, an additional four hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars for this year and for next each. So it was, it was well worth helping educate them. And then we are involved in a study that's going to be going forward, too.
And so the expectation on us locally from the state leaders was we need to step up our local contribution, as long as they were also newly contributing?
I, I think that's probably a fair assessment. Commissioner Kolpak was there for many of the conversations. So if I'm, if I'm incorrect, please correct me.
No.
Mr. Kolpak?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Strand, yes, that was in both of the hearings as part of the testimony. That expectation, I believe, is a fair one. And to, to Julie's point, Director Baumelmann's point, that the study is going to be also a significant outcome of the work that was done, and hopefully the formulas more fairly represent the actual ridership by market.
Anything else? Time for public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, they go to the podium to the left here. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to the fare that transit is going to put, propose? Just identify yourself and then you start to speak.
My name is Quincy Tullock. Thank you for the opportunity to share my perspective as a map bus consumer. I work with our aging population in a skilled nursing facility and I am enrolled at NDSU. Fargo might not be the home that I was born into, but it is the place where I choose to put down roots. With Fargo's strong sense of resiliency and community, I would like to appeal to that as your neighbor. As a daily rider commuting to work, college, and appointments, I argue that an increase in fare also paired with the decrease in route frequency will negatively impact ridership with a long-term decrease in revenue. I understand that the reason for this proposal is economic-based. If prices have not been updated in the past ten years, it is time for a change. However, transit systems are particularly vulnerable to changes in ridership, especially with increased fares. My research supports what was shown on the screen, that according to the American Public Transportation Association, a ten percent fare increase results in about a four percent decrease in ridership for large cities and perhaps eight percent in smaller cities within the U.S. Fargo sits right in the middle of that and has a population of about a hundred and twenty thousand as of the last twenty twenty census, but that does not include Moorhead and the greater area. With Fargo being somewhere in the middle, with a thirty-three percent price increase, ten percent is a reasonable number, but so is up to eighteen percent of current ridership is expected to decrease. And this is just with the price increase, not also considering the decrease in route frequency. I will step up to speak on that when that becomes an issue, or should I address that now? The route changes. Now? Okay. Also with the route changes, if you look at the proposal, three of the routes are going to be negatively impacted. Route sixteen-
Mr. Chair, could we separate this out if you don't mind?
No, that's okay. I have my notes set up as such.
It'll help my brain to put them in their own compartments.
Okay.
No, that's completely fair.
That'll come the next time we bring the next motion.
Okay. I will just say that fare increases and route decreases at the same time have historically led to a larger negative spiral. And I will continue this when we get to the route decreases. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the fare increase? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. I'm just curious for the sake of, you know, well, the, the users of our mass transit are often the people who need transit access the most. And it's not always, it's a financial challenge to do that. With these, with these changes, do you have hardship programming or hardship access or scholarshiping available for people who are hit financially and just can't make it? Help me understand what, what room there is to help people still ride the bus with, with more financial burdens placed on them?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Strand. There are, we have the OUT program, which is Opportunities Under Transit, which was a program developed probably over ten years ago with some funding that the federal government made available. And there are people that do use that. And what that does is it allows agencies to pay a portion of the fee and the funds that are in that program to pay a portion of the fee. And then the end user usually doesn't pay much more than maybe fifteen, twenty dollars for a monthly pass. That's not maybe significant to some folks, but for others it is. And there are, of course, discount fares, which are available to the elderly, youth, and disabled. So there's really no qualifiers that come other than that. So if, if you're a sixty-year older, you're eligible for the senior discount. And if you're youth or you're disabled, same thing. The, the guidelines are real stringent for those kinds of things. And if you have a documented disability, you would qualify for that. So that's half of the regular fare. And we do have many folks that take advantage of those programs.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Yes. So on public hearing thirty-five, we're going to talk about per route and service changes for map bus. It's only going to be a public hearing. There's no vote on this particular aspect as is to hear public. Julie?
Yes, thank you. So the proposed route changes, which are in your packet, and I realize many, you have seen these before, these proposed changes, are, are in response to some of the ongoing rise in operational costs and some of the stagnation of some of the revenue streams. The transportation, the federal transportation bill expires next year. They are working on it. Nothing coming out of that right now, other than apparent, my understanding is the House wants to cut public transportation quite a bit, but the Senate actually would like to see some increases there. So there are discussions going on at the federal level about this. We did do quite a bit of research and looking at our routes in minutia and tried to propose changes that would impact the least number of folks that, that utilize the system. And specific route changes and adjustment costs are going to depend on which of those changes we bring forward on September fifteenth that you do or do not approve. So we did quite a bit of public outreach, and I know some of the folks that are here are here to talk about this particular issue. So we just wanted to share with you what we did, hopefully notifying most of the folks that utilize the system. Oftentimes, a question of ridership comes up. This is a lot of numbers, I understand that. But the trend after COVID, and this is system-wide, this is Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo, NDSU, everybody is in this, in these numbers, we are seeing upward trends. Significant? Probably not to you guys, but to us, they are pretty significant. And last year, we saw a three percent increase. The paratransit ridership, paratransit is the service that's complimentary to fixed route. It's for people with qualifying disabilities, and they, they have to, under the ADA guidelines, be qualified within our service. So those, that, I believe, will tend to be continuing upward. There is a lot of need out there, and we are the least expensive to the end user option that's available. And we operate, paratransit operates within city boundaries, Fargo, West Fargo, Dilworth, Moorhead. So it's not, it's city limits. So every time there's a change in city limits, we, we fold that into what, the area that we serve. So I'm just going to briefly go through routes. I know there's a lot of folks that want to talk tonight. Route thirteen, the proposed change that we're talking about would reduce the frequency from once every half hour to once every hour. And this is a picture, well, a map, I'm sorry, of where Route thirteen travels. It travels from the GTC, goes north on Tenth Street, goes up Thirty-second Avenue, and then comes back down and serves NDSU just along University and goes back down to the GTC. So currently, if you look at, I realize there's a lot of numbers and, and stats up there, but we did look at with the population that that route touches, jobs within that sector, and what the impact would be, which is about thirty-nine percent fewer trips Monday through Friday on that route. Route fourteen, it would change the frequency of this, of Route fourteen from once every half hour to once every hour. And Route fourteen travels from downtown. It goes south on University, goes down to Thirty-second Avenue South, goes along, goes west on Thirty-second. The first number you see there right above Essentia is actually an apartment loop. And the numbers you see highlighted in red are the anticipated impacted number of riders on an average day. We pulled all the twenty twenty-four numbers in this, and about thirteen folks would be adversely impacted by that. We would be able, if we made these adjustments to Route fourteen, as far as the alignment of the route, we would be able to bring Elliot Place into being served. And I know that's been a need that's been expressed many times. And then it would travel upward into Walmart slash West Acres, just depending on what the decision on that is, and go back and travel the same way back to the downtown area. Route fifteen, the proposed change would increase that route from sixty to ninety-minute route to improve on-time performance. We actually implemented a pilot program in May of this year to determine the effectiveness of the change. And the reason we did that was there were so many on-time performance issues. There were very few drivers that could keep that route on time. And when you add snow, ice, any adverse conditions, it just was a losing battle. So there's no cost impact to the proposed change, but it has been successful. I've had some comments tonight that, that people really like it. The drivers are able to perform better on it, and, and we are able to make the time points. That one, that's actually referred to as our Gold Star Route by some folks. It travels from downtown, goes along Thirteenth Avenue, currently serves West Acres. Then it goes out to Walmart, turns around, and comes back and does a very close proximity of the way it goes out. Route sixteen, the proposed change would eliminate Route sixteen completely. Routes fourteen and fifteen cover a majority, not all, but a majority of the areas that are covered by that route currently. It travels from downtown, goes south on University, and then it goes along seventeen, I'm sorry, goes south on Fourth Street, goes along Thirteenth Avenue. And then it goes down to Seventeenth, it jogs over at Fifth Street, goes down to Seventeenth Avenue South, serves cash-wise Fargo South, goes into the West Acres area, turns around and comes back and does pretty much the same thing on the way back. So one of the proposed discussions has been, and I'll just make the point, that the old Lashkowitz high-rise is on that route. When that was removed, we did notice a significant drop in ridership, but we do know that there's housing being built there that is low income. And we did meet with Fargo Housing. They didn't seem to have a lot of concerns because Route fourteen would still serve along Fourth Street, which is about a half a block from the development. Route eighteen is a long route. It serves from downtown. I'll show you the map, but what the proposal would be, that we would end it on Essentia Clinic Area, Thirty-second Avenue South, and no longer serve areas south of Thirty-second Avenue South. The northern part of the route would also be adjusted to serve Cass County Jail. We don't want to lose that connection. Currently, that is served by Route twenty. We do anticipate minimal cost to the change, for, when the change is, if it is or is not proposed. But it is tied to adjustments on Route twenty, which I, I will cover here shortly. This currently is where Route eighteen travels. It comes, goes from downtown, travels out, hits Southeast Human Services. It hits the Cass County Jail. It goes south on Twenty-Fifth Street, which is the only route we have serving Twenty-Fifth Street. And then currently, it does travel south of Thirty-second Avenue, goes down and serves the Ozgood area, and finally goes down into Walmart, the South Walmart on Fifty-second Avenue South, travels back up the same path, serving those same areas. Hundred and seventeen number is the number of folks that it would impact based on twenty twenty-four ridership if we remove that southern portion of the route. Route twenty, which partially straddles West Fargo, would be moved from a sixty-minute route to a thirty-minute route and would only travel as far east as Forty-second Street. And that would eliminate the Cass County Jail on that particular route. But if the proposal goes through and is tied to Route eighteen, it would still be served by Route eighteen. So those adjustments are tied together, as are many of the route suggestions. So this is where Route twenty currently travels. And the area, it, our planner put on there, so the areas in kind of the Christmas green, those would be areas that would still be covered by another route that are currently on Route twenty. And the areas in red would be areas that are served but would be eliminated with this proposal. Route twenty-four is the last one. That's a realignment for the north section of the route. It would no longer serve the West Acres Transit Hub. That's another proposal that is part of this. As a transfer point for routes, it would instead utilize the Walmart shelter. It would be, the, the reason for the realignment would be to serve- It would be, the reason for the realignment would be to serve the Walmart Bus Shelter if we realigned the routes to go in there. This is Route 24 as it exists now, and that would be the only proposed change. But in order to make it happen and go along 42nd Street, we would make that adjustment that's in kind of that bright pinkish-red with number eight riders impacted, but it would still serve generally the same areas and would still serve the Sanford Medical Center. And we have a lot of riders from, from that location that utilize the service to get there for work. The other proposals include the West Acres Transit Hub. One of the proposals was to no longer utilize that hub as a transfer point. Instead, it would be shifted over to the Walmart Bus Shelter. The industrial park on demand, or as some of you know at Tap Right Service, would be to eliminate that service. The number of trips per day on that service is 10, maybe 12 riders a day. And with the nature of the industrial park, which is a lot of shift work, their chances are we can get you to work, but we, we can't get you home or vice versa. And it is an expensive service to provide. The last proposal is the paratransit service. We talked a little bit about the paratransit service. If we are offering a fixed route, we're required to offer what the feds refer to as complementary paratransit. It's, the service is supposed to be the same as fixed route or offer the same type of service to people with disabilities. And we do not have any fixed route service currently on Sundays. And we do have paratransit service out there. So the proposal would be to eliminate that service on Sundays. There are, again, 10 to 12 riders that usually take it maybe to go to church or shopping or whatever they go for. And they usually use it round trip. So when you look at ridership, it's, it's number of trips from origin to destination and then often folks come back utilizing the same service. Next steps. At the August 20 Matt Bus Coordination Committee meeting, the proposed changes were discussed but not approved. Discussions, we're gonna continue discussions with those partners and help them understand why we're making these proposals. And we have a meeting scheduled on September 10 for that group to discuss it and get input and feedback from folks tonight. Just so you're aware, the service changes have been assumed or implemented into the 2026 Transit Department budget. And action on each suggested change, we're not, like I said, we're not going to ask for it tonight, but we will on September 15, bring it back and ask for a motion on each of our proposed adjustments. So there is technically no motion that I'm asking for tonight, but I know there are folks that want to talk.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the proposed route changes? Just one at a time would come over to the podium, please. Just keep your remarks brief, if you would, but explain what your concerns are.
My name is Robert. My last name is Rollins. I am worried about the bus that goes out to West Acres because I live in Moorhead and I don't drive. And we need, and there's a lot of people that said they still need a bus to go out to West Acres, even though there's not a terminal, they can just have a bus stop and just let people get off and get back on like they do at normal bus stops. And then the bus that goes out to Walmart, number 18, they're gonna stop doing it. And I was told not to shop by my family and people at the 13th because it's not the greatest Walmart. People do steal your stuff when you try to get back on the bus. And I'd like going out to the one on 50, 52nd. And I hope they still could keep a bus that goes out there. And like West Acres, I go, I ride bus 15 out there. And I hope there's some bus that can at least go out to Walmart from the GTC. And it doesn't have to be a terminal there, that can just be a bus stop. That's all I've got.
Okay. If you want to talk to somebody from Transit, if you leave your name with Kimber in the back, she will take your name down and Transit would talk to you if you had some concerns about how to get to where you need to go. Next speaker, please. It's first come, first served. You don't have to raise your hand. You just come to the podium, please. And if the next speaker wants to line up so we don't waste time, that would be nice.
Hello again. My name is Quincy Tullik. Fair increases and route decreases at the same time have historically led to a negative spiral for transit systems. A temporary increase in revenue will occur directly after the fair increase. However, the short-term gains have historically been lost within six months as riders seek, find, and change their methods of travel, resulting in a no-win situation for anyone involved. There is a relationship of positive externality in pickup frequency. More frequent times mean more opportunities to catch the bus. There are many vehicle owners who use Matbus so they can save on gas, travel safely in the winter, and worry less about parking in downtown Fargo. I've met doctors, I've met students, young families, the elderly, and they all use the transit system. If route times are decreased, then the many people who rely on the current transit schedule may need to consider alternate methods of travel because the system will become too inconvenient to use. If you plug the numbers, if we decrease ridership too much, the proposed increase in fares that is supposed to balance that out will result in a net zero. If you even just find a decrease of 20% of riders, the less rides, it's, it's just the same. That's part of the problem. As a rider of the Matbus system, I cannot democratically vote on what and when bus routes are available. And with upcoming changes causing a decrease in bus availability, current consumers will be forced to vote with their wallets elsewhere. And I am deeply concerned for people for where other options are not available. I see women from our local shelters using the bus. I see people who are struggling with their jobs and with their homes who use the bus system. One of the changes is to no longer use West Acres as a transit hub, but use Walmart instead. Part of my concern with that is that the Walmart stop is essentially in the middle of an intersection. And in the main part of winter, there is no internal heating, there is no safety from the wind. It's just out there versus West Acres has a place where you can seek safety. When building and maintaining a community, you have to make sacrifices, and I recognize that. Is the Fargo City Commission sacrificing a lifeline for the community, for those who need it, over the revenue? Is that where priorities lie? Is it income and the ever-changing dollar or the people who live and breathe in your neighborhood? But there's hope. Not all transit system changes are negative, even with the proposals here. In Spokane, Washington, limited increases in route frequency increased ridership by 13.4%. They added a bus rapid transit line which connected downtown and university areas. When they did this, riders returned. That one line increased ridership by nearly a million people in, a million individual rides in the course of one year. Small investments in city transit transform into massive returns that are long-term and resilient to changes. Decreasing routes and increasing fares may grant a surface-level response in revenue, not profit. The long-term effects can devastate a system to the point of no return. Is that the goal? Transit is a service for the public good and positively impacts people in many ways. Thank you for allowing my time to speak.
Hello. My name is Amy Benson. I would like to thank everybody for letting me have the opportunity to speak here today. I'm very honored. I will try to keep it brief as I respect your time. My name is Amy Benson. I am a student, like the other gal who came up here, but I'm a student at MSUM instead, trying to get my bachelor's in communications. And I, I am worried about a few of the routes with Route 16. I'm worried that that'll take away the availability from Route 15 and 14 because 15 is usually very, very, very congested and that can get people really agitated and mean. So I have a concern about safety there. For the existence as, for, as the Walmart on 13th, being a transfer hub, I would be worried about an already really, really, really busy parking space to be served by several different buses as at least four or five usually go to the mall at a time. So it would probably congest there a lot. And I don't like the Walmart on 13th very much. It does feel very unsafe and I have heard that from a lot of people. But my main concerns today is that I would like to discuss the changes and ask for reconsideration of the changes proposed to Route 18. I'm one of the people who live on the route that is being canceled in the services. And although it is stopped at Essentia Health, it, it cuts off that availability to get to that major hospital for everybody south of that area. And it is the only bus that serves that far down the southwest Fargo-Moorhead area. They wouldn't be able to go to appointments or specialists for their needs. There are many citizens who live in this area that depend on it for daily accessible transportation to and from home, school, grocery stores, there are working opportunities and accessibility to Essentia-Moorhead and the entire Fargo-Moorhead area by extension of the GTC, which would be also taken away if that were happened. By shortening this route, it cuts those resources from everybody south of 32nd. And a lot of these people in this area are from lower-income households and families and live and work in this area who may be surviving paycheck to paycheck and can't cope with this change or the cancellation of the route. I would be very remiss and sad if, I, I've always counted on the bus to be able to at least get to the hospital. I have a five-year, I have a seven-year-old nephew, he's grown fast, and a one-year-old niece and family that I've been depending on the Route 18 to be able to get there in a state of emergency because when it's an emergency, time really matters. The other concern that I have is with this, it, all the routes that are, all the, there are over 30 stations that are going to have to be removed by the city. And this cuts through commercial and residential areas. This can cause buildings, sorry, building businesses and people to suffer in response. Apart from the customers who go to these businesses and the work, and the businesses that will suffer from it, the employees who rely on this bus as their main mode of transportation to their work would be at risk, resulting in a large number of people having to forcefully resign or being fired from their positions if they do not have the resources to make it. Getting a job elsewhere is difficult when you can't go anywhere anymore. This can also affect the city, I fear, in major ways, resulting in extreme losses in revenues for many businesses in the area, hurting the city's economy and having to pay for the removal of those 30 bus stops and causing a sharp increase of unemployment and possibly homelessness for those at risk. These changes will also be enacted upon in January. This is one of the most bitterly cold months in the year, along with February. And not everybody will see these changes coming, no matter how hard we try with outreach and telling people that these changes are happening. So it will hit a lot of people very, very suddenly and very viciously. These are also the months where vehicles are snowed in, frozen shut and won't even start. I myself have been in the frigid temperatures from below 20 degrees with about negative 16 degrees in wind temperatures where I could barely feel my fingers through two pairs of gloves. And the bus route helped me to get to a place of warmth and make it to my home that day. And I have always been very grateful for that and I will always remember it. Even as much as it would affect me, I know it is even much more needed by others depended on and valued as well. Even if the numbers do not show this, many people rely on this. It has been there every time when needed and asked. One of the best things about Matbus as a company is that it focuses heavily on the people, providing sustainable transportation that saves on greenhouse gas emissions, providing excellent coverage of availability to everyone with accessibility with those with disabilities, regardless of their race, gender, orientation, status, origin, or creed. I've been extremely grateful for the public transportation and the Matbus system as a whole. And I know that this company would care deeply about the people. And this route is vital and integral to the livelihoods of many, many people, much more than the 117 on that route. I, I know that number could easily reach at least three times that amount, which would be too much of a loss to suffering.
Can you finish up? I have seven speakers.
Oh, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just as the speakers get up there, remember, we're trying to understand route changes. We love Transit. We think Transit's great. But I'd like you just maybe tell us how the route changes change, because that's what we're supposed to listen to today. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Candace. I don't know much about most of the routes. I'm speaking specifically for Route 18, cutting it off at 32nd Street. That is the only route that services any of that lower area. I currently work at the Walmart at the South Fargo, so I know a lot of associates and customers rely on that bus service to be able to go down there. So just, it would cause a lot of people to lose their jobs and would make it unavailable for them to do that. I have actually had to use the, the service several times because my car battery died and I needed to get to work. So that's all I just wanted to say. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Theodora Mengi and I have ridden the buses in Fargo-Moorhead for over 40 years. The North Side Bus, trying to increase its 20-hour, negatively impact everybody on the North Side who depends on it. Removing the Bus Lakers Hub will also impact everyone in the city who wishes to go and shop or walk their miles in West Acres. Same problem with Walmart. There is nowhere for all those buses to be. There is nowhere for all of those people to wait. It's a parking lot, courier, that's it. There is nothing there to protect anybody. And removing the bus from the proposed housing where Lashkowitz was means that people with chains, with rosters, with power chairs, have to go down a hill in the middle of winter to cross a street and catch a bus. And then, when they come home, they have to do that in reverse. When Lashkowitz was there, we had to petition them to keep going to the front door to pick up their riders. They should be working with housing to do that again. To remove the South Side, as the other lady said, 52nd Avenue, none of us will have a way there. None of us can shop there. Many of them express their concerns about the 13th Avenue Walmart. If we wish to go shop at the Moorhead Run, the South Side Run, if you remove the bus route, we can't get there. If you create a problem to people, many of them who are above 60 or disabled cannot get there. They cannot travel and they cannot afford Ubers as some people so politely say, just call an Uber, tell a cab. Do you know how much they cost for a running trip? I could ride the bus for almost a month for some of those trips. And then you have to be able to block there? That's not possible at all times. to block there. That's not possible at all times. I sincerely hope that you and our housing discuss this on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ricky Mydinger.
Step close to the mic, please.
Oh, sure. Once again, my name is Ricky Mydinger. Um in reference to Route fifteen, um I've used that road, I've used that road for many years here um for various reasons. I want to fully understand you without eliminating that road from the West Acres Hub. I'm I'm sure it would make the road more efficient. Um would like to save money. Um I already do quite a bit of business out of West Acres. And due to the fact that it's an indoor shelter, yeah, um um it it affords me warmth, it affords me comfort. I agree with the fact that I have a um, due to the, due to the fact that I have a nerve, um I have a nerve disorder, um it's um, it's called neuropathy. Um so that um that impacts one of my hands and my feet, so it's, I would have to use an outdoor shelter. Um I agree with the fact that I have that nerve condition. Um there are certain parts of my body that get a lot um, they get a lot colder um a lot more quickly. And that's pretty much all I have. Thanks for your time and effort.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Robert Jackson. And uh I've got a couple of things to talk about because uh number one, Route eighteen is extremely important to me. Uh I'm disabled. When I started my journey of being disabled, it was because of long, it was because of COVID. And to this day, I just walked two blocks and had to sit down for twenty minutes to catch my breath. Um we're talking about knocking out a big chunk of eighteen and I'm right in the middle. Now, I can move and I'll do that, but I got five months where I gotta figure out how am I gonna get to the grocery store? How am I gonna get to the doctor's office? Uh I'm trying to get back to work. How am I gonna get back, get over to a North Dakota vocational rehabilitation? How am I gonna do all that? I don't know anybody's gonna come pick me up. But I do appreciate the services because that's what's been a big thing to help me. Um on average, I go grocery shopping, I got about fifty-seven pounds of stuff to carry. Now, when I walk just normal, my body uses a lot of oxygen. But when I add that extra weight, my body uses a tremendous amount. I'm only about three-quarters of a block away from where I live to the Osgood uh uh bus stop. And it takes me a good half hour to get there because I gotta stop and breathe. Uh I'm just wore out. Uh getting to a doctor's appointment, I have got no clue. Um I got a, you know, I'm I'm looking at money. Well, uh they do you no favors when they put you on disability because when you get put on disability, you can't even afford food. My Walmart, by the way, is Dorothy Day. How am I gonna get there? I can't get there. Who's gonna help me? I don't know. What if you guys made me? I don't know. Uh it affects a lot of people. Now, I'll tell you, during the summertime, there was very few people that I saw at the stop. But come wintertime, and basically whenever school starts again, I've seen an influx in my neighborhood. I think we've got six extra riders. Uh doesn't mean much to some people, but those six people need to get to NDSU, MSU, et cetera. Uh without that service, they don't get, they've gotta figure, they're gonna have to figure out another way to get there. Sure, they'll use a Uber or something like that, but those are expenses they didn't come to school, come to school thinking about. Um another thing is that we've uh, you know, that's a very important thing. And if there's nothing else that happened, I mean, for me, that would be the big thing. But then you're taking away uh on s- on Sundays, you're taking away the uh the whole idea of having paratransit. Uh I know of an of an eighty-year-old man and he lives in a nursing home, but he still owns his own home. And on Sundays, he gets together there with his family. He takes paratransit. Well, by the time he gets there, all the food's cooked, the grandkids and the children are there, everybody's having a good time. Someone's gonna have to uh figure out how to get him there. That was an, that was a service that he needed. And, you know, I really like to really focus on one thing real quick, that these uh these events that are taking place, whether they're going to church, whether they're going to visit friends and family, it's a big deal because it affects your mental health. Uh you know, I I know that real well because for the last five days, I hadn't been able to leave the house. And when you on, when you in there by yourself, it really has a deep effect upon you. And you need to get out and just say hi to somebody. And when you take away a a way, means of transportation, uh you're you're really beginning to mess with someone's mental uh health. And I think that's important. Um the other thing is, you know, while we're trying to cut back, I don't really think that we need to have, you know, a sixty-foot bus for Fargo for eighteen or whatever, however many routes we've got going on. I know one route's got four buses. Uh some of those could be shortened. Another thing is, we don't need a hub called GTC. It's a waste. And we've spent millions of dollars on that in recent years. And they're doing it right now. You can have small hubs in that, in in small areas where you're not driving as far.
Let's let's wrap it up.
Right. So, I mean, there's plenty of things to be done, but you don't have to make people that are vulnerable pay for it.
Next.
A lot is, uh um, a lot has been said about Route eighteen. So I'm just gonna say ditto. And um I've been working at the Walmart on Fifty-second for thirteen years. And um I I don't wanna lose my job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we, we didn't get her name. Could we please get your name?
My name's Martha Anderson.
Okay.
Oh, and um I also, I live a block from Ascension Hospital. So if the route is shortened, yeah, I won't have any way to get there. And um also, my doctor is at the Ascension Clinic down there. And I was so excited when um they put a stop there so I wouldn't have to take a cab. So that's, that's another disappointment.
Hello, my name is Zainab Youssef. I have some questions about the routes changing about Bus Fifteen. Like, I see a letter that I received in the mail that it will be changing about, the Bus Fifteen will not be stopping no longer at the Fargo-West Oakers Mall. So I was kinda curious about that. And the second I'm curious about is, are the bus passes are gonna be the same? Are they gonna decrease or are they gonna increase? Because mostly I take the bus in the summertime. I take the bus, like the big bus, in the summertime. When I go to school, I go to visit school, I take that bus. So, and I'm curious about that, that uh I was told that the, they're doing something for the roads. So I'm curious about that. When is it gonna finish? I'm curious about that. So that's my questions for now.
Okay. Next speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I didn't realize there wasn't a mic up here. Um I'm Mary Lou Stipp and I originate from Minot. And I was so excited to move back to Fargo because of your transit. Well, now it's almost impossible if this is gonna change because, of course, we live out in the Osgood area. We will no longer be able to take the bus because we have to still walk a little bit. But I encourage you guys not to take away eighteen because there are people that work at Osgood Hornbacher's and Walmart. And I am so saddened to hear about the HUD. If that goes through at West Acres, I do not like that Walmart out there because people, especially people with disabilities, they're being attacked by people that you don't even see come around you and take your belongings. You guys, think for the people with disabilities. Come on, make it work. You guys, we have got a big city here. There is no excuse for this. Come on, give us a break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Doug Stipp. I'm uh, I'm her other half here. Just as a a point of of historical context, just within the last few years, when we moved here uh and and bought a townhouse where we live, you could pick up number eighteen. Uh all you had to do to get on number eighteen was go on Forty-Fourth Avenue and pick it up by, you could either pick it up by uh across the street on on Fourteenth. It was not too far from a place called Blue Stem Parkway or whatever they call that. And then, in in an interest in trying to make the route more efficient, they moved the the nearest place where we could pick up the bus over to Forty-seventh Street South, which which amounts to a several block. I'd say it's about a, maybe about a ten-minute walk to get there, thereabouts, but still, it's still a a bit of a walk to get there. Okay, fine. But but uh if you move the end of the route to uh, if if you change that from ninety minutes to sixty minutes and you move the uh end of that route to Ascension Hospital, that's a forced march for three days' rations, I think. I'm exaggerating to prove a point, but but that that that's a long walk. And at the, at the same time, you're also going to increase people's reliance on on the paratransit, which I'm already worried about what demands this is going to to make on the paratransit. So uh that's my two cents.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for letting us speak today.
My name is is Craig Campbell and I've been asked by uh my daughter, who is a vulnerable adult, thirty-four-year-old with autism, and uncomfortable to speak in this um setting. So she asked me if I would express for her um the impact of the changes. She is a a passenger on the on the Matpara uh and uses it to get to work. Her concern that she has expressed to me is that she's been told about work requirements for benefits that she receives. And so her need to have a job is not just for her income. She works as a bagger at Hornbacher's uh and lives independently and is a tax-paying citizen. Uh and in addition to needing an income just to put food on her table, uh she also is fearful that she's going to receive her benefits because of the inability to get to work when uh Matpara does not provide services on Sunday. Um life is difficult for everybody. Um we all know that. And I know the challenges that you have. Life is harder for some within our society. And I think that it is incumbent on those of us who can help them to make their way, when they're trying to make their way, and people have expressed it tonight, uh to 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 help them and to provide a a hand up to them so that they can, that they can make it in in this world.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Dennis Hopper. I take Route Four out of Moorhead, Minnesota, from Parkview Terrace. Um with Route Sixteen, I would say disagree with that because during the springtime, I take Route Sixteen um to get off at Ascension and Sanford. And also, I get off at Fargo-South for uh Special Olympics practice for uh powerlifting. And I would kinda, for Route Sixteen, I would extend the timeframe. Instead of being done early, extend the time to, say, nine, nine fifteen, because when I get done with practice about eight, eight-thirty, and Route Sixteen's not in service, I have to walk all the way to Thirteenth Avenue to catch Route Fifteen to go back home. And for, on top of it, I would say deny the cancellation of um losing the transfer hub at West Acres Mall. And like with the big chaos at the Thirteenth Avenue Walmart, yeah, that that doesn't suit me very well with all the buses going there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last two speakers, go ahead.
Hi, my name is, sorry, my name is Destiny Ryland. Um I would like to speak on behalf of the Route Fifteen and the West Acres Hub. Um I saw that it might possibly still go by it, which is fine, but it's still like during winter. I don't know about the, how high the snow gets, to be honest. But I do distinctly remember hearing one of the other speakers saying about Ubers and taxi drivers. It does get expensive going back and forth. And me personally, as you see, I have a service animal. Not a lot of drivers are open to having a dog in their vehicle. Me and Doyle's, we actually worked on accommodations to where they see I have a dog, so we work out pet friendly. But me and Uber drivers, they are realize that they can't deny me. But I still get drivers that deny my service animal. And luckily, they've updated to where they do pet friendly, but it's still really expensive. So if they can not take away the transfer hub at West Acres, or at least just allow Fifteen in there only, or work out some kind of way to where just a few buses in there only would be really accommodating, because I go there to walk my miles with my dog or just to hang out when I'm bored, that would really work out perfectly. And Sixteen, I use it when I need to go there for appointments here and there. Thank you.
Next.
Yes, Christopher Cohen, Fargo resident. Uh the problem, so I've studied the the proposed changes and the problem is that the online public comment map is unreadable. So we can't really determine where all the routes are going and how they're going to interconnect. And so we can't, we're not prepared to make comments about about those today. Uh the problems are that they're not color-coded. So each route doesn't have its own color. They don't have direction arrows, so we don't know which direction they're going. Um and they're not separated. So you'll have one street that might have three different routes on it and you have one gray line. And there's multiple gray lines. Some are dotted, some are dashed. And the the streets are not labeled. Uh I'm talking about in particular the area around West Acres and um the Thirteenth Avenue Walmart. I'm talking about in particular the area around West Acres and the Thirteenth Avenue Walmart. Because I was trying to understand how all those changes are going to work properly. So we really need to see that before we can make public comment. And no, I did see a couple of maps that were put up tonight showing some of the new routes there. But those aren't available on the Matt Bus website, so we weren't able to look at that. And then lastly, with regard to the elimination of Route Sixteen. Yeah, I lived down on Fourth Street near the water plant. And so now we'll still have Route Fourteen going down Fourth Street, but only one direction. So it only goes south. So if I want to travel downtown, I can't. So I'm gonna have to walk at least over a dozen blocks just to get to City Hall. And it's good exercise for me. But the only problem is sometimes during the winter. There's treacherous foot conditions with ice and snow. So that's not gonna work. I thought of an idea that could solve that. And that is to, when the So what I think is gonna happen is that the fourteen will then stay where it is. And it will go inbound back up Tenth Street to the GTC. And I think instead, we should make it go inbound up on Fourth Street. So we'll have two-directional travel on Fourth Street. Because currently, Tenth Street South has three routes that travel inbound on it. It has Route Fifteen, Route Fourteen, and Route Eighteen. So it almost has too much coverage. So that's my idea. Thanks.
Last speaker.
Good evening. My name's Mark Puppi. I'm a resident of North Fargo. I came just out of interest of seeing what would happen at the city commission meeting this afternoon. I'm glad that I did come. I'm not real sharp on all the details of the presentation, but one thing, several things caught me off guard. First, I have extensive experience riding the city buses due to a medical disability. I want to thank the Matt Transit for doing a remarkable job with what they have. I think it's great and it's served me and my thirteen-year-old daughter well. I currently have my license. And if you have your driver's license. I would wager that you have been to the West Acres on Thirteenth Avenue. There's a Cruel's Diner there. It used to be Toys R Us. That's a three-way intersection. To transfer that hub from West Acres, placing that hub at a three-way intersection. A lot more congestion, a lot less safety, and a lot less access to the resources at West Acres. Route Eleven runs up by the VA Hospital, Twenty-Fifth Avenue to New Horizons. There are people there who, I heard suggestions that we remove the GTC. I would pose that. I don't think that's on the table. But there are people at New Horizons who take Route Eleven to the GTC and transfer to West Acres. Only because that's their only opportunity for social activity. They don't have mobility. They're unable to speak often times. And if that hub at West Acres becomes compromised. You'll have a lot of people, even in North Fargo, adversely affected by removing that West Acres hub. So I implore you to keep that in mind. I didn't know that the hearing was going on tonight. I'm glad that I did arrive because I saw three routes that I didn't have to think twice about what was happening. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julie, did you want to make any comments in response to any of the issues? Or the West Acres Hub, that was a voluntary decision or?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the West Acres Hub was a monetary decision or proposal.
You've heard a lot about the Walmart stop. You probably look into that.
I have, yes.
This will end the public hearing at this point, right?
Correct, yes.
But they still can reach out to you and comment?
Oh, absolutely.
On a survey. You will look at some of the things that Christopher said about routes, maybe making them better. Commissioner Pepcorn.
So Mr. Chair, I have a question for Julie. So West Acres actually requested us. It's not that we wanted to leave there. They actually want us to leave. And so it's unfortunate. But this was not our choice. This is West Acres telling us to get out. So I just want people to be aware of that. It wasn't us, it was them. And so I do think you should repeat that, Julie, because I think a lot of people think it was our choice. And that's not true. Thank you.
Yeah, to Commissioner Pepcorn's point, that there is the desire on West Acres' part to maybe relocate us out of there. We did have a study done out there. This has been probably eight years ago. Proposing still the West Acres area, but a different location. But with us needing to provide full-time security and then the leasing costs, it does add up. That's correct.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. We'll take a five-minute recess, come back at six forty.
Thank you.
We'll call the meeting back to order. Item thirty-six. I'd ask people to go back to their seats, or you can leave the place if you want, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. We're gonna have a hearing on a dangerous building located at twelve oh two, twelve oh four, First Avenue South. And one oh three, one oh five, one oh five, one and a half, twelve three, the South. Sean O'Radek and Sean, just delighted to long meeting. If you could keep your presentation brief, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll keep it as brief as I possibly can. We're here tonight to take a look at a dangerous building. It's got five units in it. It's a twenty-nine hundred and forty-eight square foot, two-story wood-framed structure that contains five residential units. It was originally constructed in nineteen fifteen and the taxes are current and paid. They've had seventeen calls for service in twenty twenty-five alone. The list of damages include a fire that's happened. It's also had some police action on it that did some damage to the building. Significant wall window damage to the main floor. Total loss from basement unit from a fire on seven seven to twenty-five. Smoke damage to the rest of the building. Entry doors have been compromised and kicked in. There's been squatter complaints and damage to the main floor unit. Electrical meters were removed due to the fire, but they have been reestablished. Basement walls show movement and there is some bracing in place. And the deck has deteriorated. And again, the property did have another fire in twenty twenty, so this is the second one. It does appear to meet eight of the ten dangerous building criteria. Timeline of events is damage to the structure occurred from Fargo Police Action on six fourteen. Now, the Fire Department reported a fire in the lower unit of the building on seven seven. Investigation was conducted on seven ten and the structure is posted as a dangerous building on seven twenty-four. On seven thirty, they received, we received an engineering report from the owners for temporary safeguards during the clean-out and construction. No final engineering report has been submitted. We verified that the owner did secure the structure on seven thirty-one. We made the request for the public hearing on eight eighteen. Notice and order to show cause was sent on eight twenty-two and we're having that dangerous hearing today on nine two. Additional information for this property, again, it was damaged during a police raid, or police action on six fourteen. They do not have any current mortgages on this property. The owners have been working with their insurance company to secure financing for repairs. And they have filed a claim for the damage that occurred during the police action on six fourteen. Excuse me. Additionally, they do not have any permits out for this property right now. They're in the cleanup and evaluate phase. And again, the engineering was only for temporary safeguards during construction. Here's some pictures of the property. You can see that there is some securing and stuff that had been done due to the fire. Again, you can see the significant fire damage on the structure. Again, securing and broken doors, exterior doors to allow squatters to enter. Here's the basement unit. As I understand it, the owners have cleaned out some of it and are starting to show some progress, but it hasn't been significant yet. There is significant charring and we're gonna have to have a lot of engineering and stuff to be able to make sure that this is gonna be a sustainable structure in the future if they so desire to repair it. Again, here's some of the damage from the SWAT action or from the police action. It damaged a header over one of the large windows and it's a load-bearing header, so it is a significant structural problem. Again, this is just more of that. And then interior conditions and some of the other units. This is just one of the units showing how clean and sanitary is an issue in a lot of it. There's missing smoke detectors, compromised doors. Here's pictures of the deck showing that that's deteriorating to a point that it needs to be repaired. And also another door that's been damaged. Some temporary shoring up of some windows and things like that. The problems with the basement, you can see that there's been some patches made, but there is, still needs to be more work done. Here's some more damage that's been done by squatters and others that find it as an attractive nuisance. And some more pictures of some of the fires. This just kind of shows some of the smoke damage that's in the building. Here again, more exterior doors. And once again, they have secured this to a point. So they don't have any squatters in there that we know of right now. But in the past, it has been a problem. Here's just some of the securing that they tried to do and they have upgraded this securing to date. And our recommended motion is on the screen.
Is there anyone present who speaks to this motion of our dangerous building? Please come to the speaker's stand.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Stephen Moore. This is my husband. Name is Huilu. We are the house landlord.
Can you move the mic down to your voice a little bit so we can hear you better, please, sir?
Sorry. My name is Stephen Moore. This is my husband. He's Huilu. We are the, this building's owner. So we started by the property incident from the American Family Insurance Company. Started from the twenty fifteen when we bought the house. So and right now, we already paid the deal the next year, June. It's twenty twenty-five. June, we all paid the incident fee. So then this SWAT the time measure is June fourteenth. That time, we hold a family. It's out of USA for the summer vacation. So when we back, the tenant is sending the, he taught the video, send, let us know. They said last night, the policeman swatted the window and the couple from the noon till midnight, about midnight, then a couple hours. Then the policeman tells the other tenants, say that they will come back, seal the window. But here now, never people come in there. And other tenant help us just see the, like the picture, you're the ball covered there. So they said only two nights, a lot of homeless guy all come in there and get the more damage. So then the SWAT the window is the bigger window. It's a low building wall. So right now, just the inspection of our house and said that the construction have damage. So we also let all the tenant move out by July. So right now, and couple companies gave the estimate. It's a total is thirty-one thousand five hundred fifty-nine, fifty-eight point five. But the incident only cover us, we only received the three thousand. You only get one tenth of the money come back. So we just don't know how to do because this incident company also gave our email. They said because need to repair so lot, they don't cover. They said, and also they don't cover the reconstruction damage. We just want to say, because before these two case. We, our building is everything all available for rent. And Fargo City just the house inspection department. Every time inspect our home, everything all good and perfect for rent. It's just our damage that caused the construction damage. So why the incident company not cover? So we only get the one tenth of the money, not enough for one window repair. So just right now, so we don't know what's the problem and don't know how to step there. And we also connect the couple places. We go to the police office five more time. We go to, every week, go to the incident company. And right now, we also find the complaint for the North Dakota Incident Commission, Commission Office. We also have the complaint.
Are you gonna repair the house?
What?
Are you gonna repair the house?
Oh, yeah. We want to repair it. No.
When are you gonna repair the house?
If the money enough, just as the estimate gather. We just call, have two company went to compare. They said that they can fix in two week.
So Sean, this is, if you do something different, they have time to do this. Otherwise, we go over first. Is that correct?
So what we have before us is just basically giving them another sixty days to get the things with their insurance company and stuff sorted out.
It's got the electricity cut off?
The electricity and the water are actually on.
It's unlivable right now.
Excuse me?
It's unlivable, right?
It's not, what?
You can't live in it right now.
No, no, nobody can live in it. It's vacant at this point, too. The tenants, they have living on the top floor. We worked with them to try and get them out and they found separate housing. But the problem is, is there's insurance companies and stuff involved in it and they're not willing to pay out. We just need a timeline to be able to establish something so that we have some movement on it. We're not sitting on it for months.
So of course, the insurance company makes the decisions.
Well, it's gonna help, hopefully help them get the insurance company makes some decisions. As well as giving them a timeframe that they have to work within. If something happens with the insurance company or something, right now, we're not seeing a lot of movement on it. They're doing a little bit, but it's not a lot. And there hasn't been no structural or anything done on it at this point. So right now, it does constitute a hazard to the people around it as well as others that could get into it.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do you have a second? Any further discussion? We'll call over, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Thank you.
Item thirty-seven, recommendation to deny extension request for dangerous building located at one one oh two, First Avenue South. Sean, to explain this as well.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is, this extension request was made by AJS Ventures LLC. Adam Stone Street, the owner of the property, is here tonight and he would like an opportunity to speak to the commission. This is for eleven oh two, First Avenue South. This structure was deemed a dangerous building during the city commission meeting on June twenty-third. Again, the owner has requested an extension. He requested it on eight fifteen. Otherwise, it would have been on the other agenda if we would have received it earlier. A copy of that is attached. We did receive plans finally to try and get a permit to salvage this place on eight eighteen. And the engineering and the plans that were submitted were not anything that we could actually use for any permitting purposes. Again, we responded back and gave them a list of things that we needed to have in the plans and things. And we responded back on eight twenty-one, so just a couple of days later. We're trying to be as quick as possible for this one because the deadline was eight twenty-three. But again, he submitted the extension request, so we have to give him the opportunity here at commission. Again, we sent them back. The engineering and plans are both insufficient for any kind of permitting process. We did receive revisions on eight twenty-six and they did make some changes and updates on them. But there's still a lot of clarifications, confirmations, and we still don't have any structural plans or anything for the property. If you do look at the pictures that we submitted in your packet, those pictures do show the condition of the property as of last Thursday. Right now, you know, he was asked to put up the exterior covering or that tieback on the outside to help with the deterioration of the building. So if he wanted to save it, we wanted to save what was there already. It was improperly installed and it was only installed up a little bit. It really did nothing. It was a net zero for us, looking at it that way. We do continue to receive complaints on this property. We have received a couple within the last week. And with that, if Mr. Stone Street would like to speak to the commission, we're perfectly fine with that.
I'll have a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Strand?
Public hearing's over, John.
No.
No.
This isn't a public hearing. This isn't a public.
It's not a public hearing, but Mr. Stone Street is here to speak to the commission on his own behalf. on his own behalf, to try and save his structure, if, if you'll allow it. I didn't guarantee that he'd be able to speak.
Nancy, what other rules?
I, I don't know if he did sign up to indicate an intent to speak to an agenda.
Have to sign to the agenda item.
Mayor, I'd like to hear from him before my vote.
Sure, okay. Will you come speak then, sir? Two and a half minutes, if you won't mind.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Adam Stone Street, operating member of AJS Ventures LLC, owner of eleven-oh-two First Avenue South. Here tonight to respectfully request a thirty-day extension, so that my architect and engineer can finalize the document needed to move this project forward. I have over nine years of experience developing commercial, industrial, and storage properties, and I live here in downtown Fargo. I care deeply about this neighborhood, and believe this property, once completed, will contribute positively to downtown's housing options and vibrancy. When I purchased this building in twenty-twenty-two, it was represented and used as a triplex. Utilities, inspections, and appraisals all reflected that. Only after beginning renovation, did we discover a fifty-seven-year-old city record suggesting it was originally a duplex. That unexpected issue stalled the project for nearly two years, as we navigated reviews, redesigns, and legal questions. Despite these setbacks, I never gave up. I've engaged multiple architects, engineers, and legal counsel. We've redesigned the interior to comply with current code, addressed fire and parking requirements, and obtained a structural opinion. Today, the project is closer than ever to compliance and completion. I realize that the property has sat too long in a partially demolished state, and I share the neighbors frustration. My intent has always been to rehabilitate it properly and safely, not cut corners. We removed hazardous old materials, updated infrastructure, and planned for modern life safety systems. Inspections, previously acknowledged that an extension might be necessary, as engineering wrapped up, provided progress is being made. That progress is happening now. For thirty more days, I believe we can submit the final documents and get this project moving towards construction. This is a small project, but it has outsized importance. It eliminates blight, adds housing, and sports downtown's architectural character. Ask for your support in granting this short extension, so we can finish what we started and deliver a safe, valuable improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Sean, does a thirty-day extension, it help anything?
The thirty-day extension would not be adequate enough to get the paperwork completed, and also complete the construction project. When we ask people to submit their, their extension requests, we ask them to submit for a full timeframe, as in getting your permit and completing the project. We don't know how long the project would take, we don't know if they're gonna be able to complete it in thirty days, that's why we're recommending denial, is we just don't see that this project is enough to push forward at this point. We don't feel that the owner of it is, is paying enough attention to this project, actually at this point, to push it forward. At one time, he was going to demolish it, so he did take out a demo permit, so it's been stalled out, not due to our factor, it's been stalled out just because it's been sitting there. So, at one point, he was going to demo it anyway, but that never came to be, that's when he tore off all the exterior stuff and things like that. So, that's why we're looking for the extension and stuff, we just don't believe that this project is gonna move forward and come to a completion.
Ms. Strand, do you have any other questions?
No.
Discussion? We have a motion.
I'll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item thirty-eight, update on the Communications Department, Mike Redlinger to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I was asked to provide a brief report this evening on the status of the Communications Department, joined this evening by Beth Wigman. Beth is our Assistant HR Director, and so what I wanted to do was just provide a high-level summary of what occurred and where we're going here in the future. Just really wanna thank the Commissioners, too, for your time over the last couple of weeks, as we've talked about next steps for the Communications Department. So first, I'd also like to note tonight, that it's probably important for our discussions to stay really focused on the future and on our path forward. It really is, is not going to be something we're gonna be able to talk about tonight with the investigative report. That report is public now, that's been out for some time, and so we just ask for your discretion, for legal reasons and other considerations, to keep the comments tonight really focused on the future and moving forward. So, what I can confirm is that what did occur, we did have an employment investigation that was conducted, following the receipt of a formal complaint and related concerns, and due to the scope and the magnitude of some of the issues involved, what we did was move to the outside, use an outside investigator to look at the matter more thoroughly, and then really made sure that we were looking at other options for outside investigators. This is really consistent with city practice, it's consistent with other matters in which the city has needed outside services in the past. And so, what are we doing in the interim? I think in the interim, it's really important to note that we've got a couple of really excellent staff members that are helping us out in co-leadership positions right now, Brian Celine, who you see here at your meetings on Monday evenings, as well as Archie Ingersoll. They are stepping forward as co-operational leads during this time. Also would note that we've had a number of staff meetings, these are meetings that are occurring within that team, as well as with Archie and with Brian, trying to support their needs, and making sure that we are getting them set up for success, and moving this department forward. Also would note that our department administration has also been involved very directly for the last two weeks, will continue to stay directly involved, providing interim leadership, interim support for our two leaders, making sure that they are supported, and that they have what they need to move forward. Most importantly, it's, it's really incumbent on us to get ready for the future, really prepare the department for that future, and do everything that we can to prepare for new leadership to join that team. That is probably our number-one opportunity and priority for right here and right now, and that is to move forward with the, the selection of a new director for the department, that's something that we'll be recruiting for, and there'll be an open and advertised position. And then together with our department, once that individual arrives, what we will do is really look at the operations of the department, look at workload, also look at other ways in which we can help that department move forward. So, really starting with that key principal leader, and making sure that that person, he or she, is in a position for success, and can really help us move forward. Finally, in addition to thanking Archie and Brian for all of their effort, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our other team members. Our other team members have really assisted a great deal in the last two weeks, they've really helped us rebalance existing projects and workload. They're taking on new duties, new tasks, new things that perhaps are new to them, but it still is work that's important. But they're really doing a great job, and probably most importantly, they're really supporting one another. We just much appreciate that as an employer, and making sure that we're doing everything we can to support them. They are really doing a great job helping one another, and so I just wanted to publicly thank them, publicly thank Archie and Brian for their work as well, in moving the department forward. So, with that, that's the brief report I wanted to add tonight. Happy to answer any questions, and Beth is here with me as well. Thank you.
Mr. Pepcorn, you originally had asked a question, did you want to ask any questions or details?
Sure, I have lots of questions. First of all, I'm a city commissioner, and I didn't know anything about any of this. That's not a good sign. Second of all, to think that we're gonna continue the Communications Department the way it was in the past with the director, that's not correct. We're, we're gonna drastically reduce the spending in the Communications Department, because we don't need it. The third is, was there an RFP, and who approved the money that was spent for this? Because I think it was, well, we have a finance committee, it certainly wasn't approved by us. And so, it appears to me like the city employees were the ones that determined all of this, and that's not a good sign. So, those are just my initial comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would just ask Commissioners, keep it constructive, because we are following policy, city policy in doing this, and Beth can explain that, but the ability for them to look into things. Number two is, all Commissioners are welcome to give administration ideas of how they want the Communications Department go forward, but I don't want to neglect the fact that the team is working very vigorously now to maintain the things that have to be done. And it's a very busy city, very busy things going on, communications department is critical for that. I do appreciate very much that people are stepping up and stepping in roles they're not normally in, and is doing a great job. But when you lose four members from an department, that's a lot of people to lose at one time, and to make things go on in a seamless manner. And then, Beth, you wanna explain a little bit how we go outside when we have to in HR?
Sure. Okay. Okay, so when we are faced with the potential for an investigation, we really look at the circumstances surrounding the matter at hand, and in this particular case, we worked with city administration and determined that because of the complexity and the scope of the investigation at hand, we were best served by an external investigator versus handling it internally with our HR team or other investigators.
Mr. Turnberg.
I'm, I'm a little perplexed at why us asking questions would, would be discouraged for legal reasons. What would that be?
So, the, the purpose of our report tonight is just to talk really about the future and moving forward. The investigative report is the work of a third-party investigator, that work would really stand on its own. Those questions that would be asked of her would be questions posed to her. We're not here to talk about what's really in the contents of that report, simply because that has all been disclosed publicly, and is really, those were issues that are identified. I would just share that many of the issues that she highlights in her report, these were some of the same concerns, some other issues that were raised previously, so I'd note that we appreciated the work, we will certainly use those findings as we move forward, because I do think it's important that, especially when you have, whether it's in this matter or in other matters, where we've used outside investigators, it's really important to learn from those experiences, and use their reports to inform where to go in the future. And so, I would say that the information gleaned from that process will most certainly be used in the future, as we think about the, as we think about changes to be made, as well as supporting the team that remains in place.
Was this investigator supposed to be a neutral party?
So, we use third-party investigators, this isn't the first time, but we will use third parties if the, as Beth said, the issues are complex, or we think we need that impartiality, that ability to complete the work without any kind of bias, or if there are concerns with a complainant, with a specific department or other internal issues, we just wanna make sure to give that investigation the best chance for success, and this is one way that we do that. And so, in other cases in the past, in my time here, too, we've done outside resources that way, just to simply get that third-party review, get that, that kind of arms-length, so that they can make their own remarks and judgments, using their own means and methods, and their own investigative tactics, and, and just to try and get to the bottom of issues. So, I would just say that that's not unusual for the city of Fargo.
I would say that, I would think residents would be very curious to know why she was picked. Just reading her biography, I don't think she aligns with more than half of our residents. And then, for some of the comments that she made during the investigation, I thought were extremely inappropriate, to say that the city provides comm staff for the PD, does the city also provide equal funding for BLM to get its messaging out? Why on earth would that be brought up to the comms department? And, and saying that that should be done, and it's only fair. Her bio also represents her, her way of thinking. We lost four incredible workers, which I think could have saved the city thirty thousand dollars by just having a meeting with them and communicating. So, instead, we hired this very biased investigator, spent thirty thousand dollars, which we may have a lawsuit coming at us, for a department that could have been handled internally, when we've had way more complaints about the police department than the comms department. So, why hasn't an, an external investigator been used for the PD?
As it relates to the police department, I have no formal complaint that's been received to investigate at this time, and I can just talk about briefly how we look to other attorneys in this case. We've worked with other attorneys, I can think of another one, from the Fergus Falls area that we've worked with in the past. These are labor law experts, they are employment law experts, they have familiarity with North Dakota employment law, as well as employment law generally. And so, in this case, I can just say that we looked at credentials, we looked at availability, that's another big thing, too. So, working with the city attorney's office, we were scanning the environment to see who would be available to assist us in this matter. Again, that's not unusual, that's something that we've done in the past, most recently in other matters, working with a different attorney, but that would be customary here for asking for that assistance from the attorney's office to try and screen prospective attorneys who could serve as investigators. And I can say that the scope of work was secured from this particular attorney, and it was deemed that she was available, credible, and could certainly be well-qualified to perform the work.
And Mike and Beth, I think I have to define what a written complaint is, I think Commissioner Turnberg doesn't quite understand that.
I, I don't like.
Let me, let me finish. Mr. Turnberg, let me finish.
That is not fair.
Let me finish. You say you have multiple complaints on the police department.
Which you've all been CC'd on in emails.
Turnberg, let me finish. We had written complaints in regards to the comms department, we did not have written complaints regards to police department. It sets up a different precedent when the human resources gets a written complaint. Can you explain, Beth, what a written complaint means, rather than if I'm just complaining, to actually file a written complaint?
Yep. And so, in this situation, we received a complaint in writing, as it sounds, from an employee who was concerned about some things, and that in conjunction with other circumstances in the situation, is what led us to determine that an investigation was needed.
This is disappointing, and thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money.
Mr. Kolpak.
So, the, the communication team has actually been under public scrutiny and criticism now for almost two years, and continued to rise above the criticism during that time, and still do work. And for some context, the work of the communication team, which is in my portfolio, requires a twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day effort, given the realities of the media world today, along with the tremendous amount of working projects they manage each week. And I will share for some context, that each position of the twelve, over the past five years and prior to me, was approved by both the Personnel Evaluation Committee, as well as the Finance Committee, both of which used to be not in public, but privately, to determine what was gonna be brought forward for final approval. Today, that's now covered by the FAR and the Finance Committee meetings, which are now public meetings. It's also important, I think, to remember that the team also brings in a million dollars a year, which is half their cost, which is deposited directly into the general budget because of broad, public broadcasting content. You know, another important reminder here is our government's policies, which we spent eighteen months together working on, it was prior to Commissioner Turnberg's time, but, but have been shared, clearly articulate that our only direct oversight of any position is of the city administrator. And therefore, I don't think it's appropriate to call out specific employees or teams. And this entire period of criticism, along with the lack of transparency, in my opinion, and communication over the past five minutes with some of the people who left, have been demoralizing and chilling across the board, not just to the communication team and the employees we have lost, but across all departments. And what is appropriate now is, we, is, and I believe, based on our governance policies, that what is appropriate now is that we have an expectation that this information to Director Redlinger's comments earlier, will be used to evaluate how our teams and management at all levels and all departments are supported by administration and human resources to ensure the best outcomes and employee success of all our employees. In this case, and if you have read the report, as I have, what is still, for me, the greatest takeaway, is how a concern turned into a complaint, and ultimately resulted in a resignation and an exit interview, but none of that was shared with the managers involved for the last five, for five months, and after, it was only after the investigation began. That means that the managers involved in the concerns were never told about the concerns until the investigation was underway, when in fact, telling them right away could have completely avoided an investigation altogether and helped the team succeed. And sadly, it resulted in the loss of some very accomplished and dedicated employees, and now is very much impacting the remaining employees. So, aligned with our appropriate governance policies, I will be working directly with the city administration, bi-weekly meetings for a number of topics, on how changes will be implemented to ensure our managers are given the support and tools necessary to ensure their and their team's success moving forward, is a possibility. And I also mean this sincerely, I wanna thank every person who has chosen Fargo for their career, and serves the citizens every day, because without Team Fargo, like we say in every budget cycle, Fargo would not be Fargo, and we would not be the success that we are. So, I wanna sincerely thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Strand?
Certainly. All I know is that we're one people, we're one community, we're one. All I know is that we're one people, we're one community, we're one extended family. And all of us will at times be challenged with moments where people in our world and sphere are under criticism or scrutiny. But we should not ever lose sight of the reality or the fact and the expectation of us to treat people as well as we can and with as much respect as they deserve, even in their bad moments. And I think we've fallen short in this. I'm a people hugger. We need to hug our own people more, and we need to discredit them publicly, when there are avenues and ways and vehicles to address our concerns with our own people internally. This is not the time to air our laundry, air our dirty laundry in public. And if we keep doing that, and if that's what we do, that's us. It's not them. That's a reflection of us. If we go out every day, I'm going to take my dirty laundry and show everybody, I'm going to show people how wrong others are, I'm going to show them how much faults there are, I'm going to show people how imperfect there are. We can all do that all the time. But is that our leadership style that we're aspiring to? Is that why the people voted us in? Is to cloud other people and their futures and their lives? I just think we can do better. And we need to do better right now, going forward, for all of our people. We'll have more moments like this. What's our approach? And that's where my head's at, is I have a big heartache inside, a big lump in my throat, that our group of people has just been affected in a way that's going to continue, and will affect others maybe going forward. And that has to stop. Just has to stop.
That concludes your report, I think, Michael. I think we lost four excellent people, and we'll have to relook at what we're going to do. I would ask commissioners to give administrative team input if they like some modifications of the Communications Department. We still have a lot of stuff we have to do at every department head, and we have to support our department heads. So I would say, again, we'll try to be helpful in that, but you're going to hire a new director, and then we'll go from there as far as how we may reform what we're going to, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Knackness, construction update.
Here to provide monthly update on our engineering-led construction projects. There have not been any injuries or accidents on any City of Fargo projects since I last presented. Always trying to steer people here to Fargo streets. This is just a screenshot from that webpage where residents can find more information about current projects, future projects. And then there's an interactive map that shows current real-time road closures, and then upcoming capital improvement plans. Want to talk briefly about the fiber build. That Gateway Fiber is, has started in South Fargo. This has been going on for about a month. The map that you see here, pictured in green, the green lines are areas that are complete, where we are monitoring restoration. Orange is active installs. Yellow is approved permit routes. White is where the Gateway Fiber has submitted, but has not yet been reviewed or approved by our staff. And then red are areas that a route was denied, and then we're working with Gateway Fiber on an alternative route. Also have an email address and phone number up here, where residents can contact us with any concerns that they have with the work that's taking place. Couple of images here. This first one just kind of shows what residents can expect. So as we talked about when Gateway Fiber was here and ubiquity, most properties, especially newer properties in town, have a 10-foot utility easement, so extends about two feet on the house side of the sidewalk, going an additional 10 feet. So this is an area where utility companies typically are located and are allowed to locate. And you can see here, based on some of those marks, that there are a number of utilities that are already in there. So what the contractor does is, after those locates have been made, contractor typically spots any of the utilities using a back truck, like you see here in the image. And then you can just kind of see directional drill rig there in the background, where a little directional drill throughout this corridor where utilities are installed. Talk briefly about 32nd Avenue. Roadway is closed between 18th Street and 22nd Street. Business access is being provided. All underground utility construction is complete at this point, and the contractor's working on paving between 18th and 22nd Street South. And this project is estimated to be complete here in just a couple of weeks, and hopefully the contractor will be getting the full incentive on this project. Here's just an image of the portion that's already complete east of where the contractor's currently working. Same contractor is actually up on North University Drive as well, doing concrete pavement repair. There's three, four phases taking place, two phases are already complete, and contractor's currently working in the third phase. And so this is reduced from, to one lane between 28th Avenue and 32nd Avenue North. You might have read here recently that the Broadway Railroad Crossing just north of Main Avenue will be closed. This will take about 10 days to complete, and BNSF is upgrading the railroad crossing material there. Lot of projects going on. In fairness of your time, I'll go through these pretty quick, but number of street recon and pavement preservation projects taking place, number of projects continuing throughout the city. Some new development projects to highlight. Selkirk Third Edition Contractors installing underground utilities, just an image of them installing sanitary sewer. Interstate Business District, we've been talking about this throughout the summer, dirt work and concrete pavements currently going on. Storm sewer lift station is complete. Here's just an image of them working on that concrete pavement. Southwest Metro Pond continuing to excavate clay. They have installed the box covers under 45th Street and working on restoring that roadway. Here's the image of the pond excavation. 32nd Avenue Storm Lift Station, the walls are all poured, and they're working on the lift station cover for that. And then we do have some projects that we still anticipate starting up, Dakota Commerce Center Phase Two, that was just awarded by City Commission tonight, and then some miscellaneous repair projects. Happy to share that NP Avenue between Broadway and Roberts is complete. Feel this project turned out well. Encourage you to go take a look if you haven't. And then a lot of other projects have also completed. Another one I want to highlight here is 45th Street and 32nd Avenue Concrete Pavement Repair. That project is complete. Again, you've seen a lot of these before, so I'll go to opportunity for questions if there are any.
Any questions for discussion? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
You have my recommendations for appointments and aid of mayor commission. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Kulpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Ladies on reports, Commissioner Strand?
No report, mayor.
Commissioner Kulpak?
I have two water updates and three event updates, for a total of five slides, I believe. So the first is with water reclamation. Yep, so the Water Environmental Federation Global Nonprofit of Water Quality Professionals has highlighted the city of Fargo for our innovative effluent reuse facility. And the facilities in North Fargo processes wastewater so it can be reclaimed for industrial use since 2007. Thank you, Brian, sorry. Since, I keep getting too close to the mic. Since 2007, Fargo has supplied the Tharaldson Ethanol Plant with more than 6 billion gallons of reclaimed water, helping our metro area preserve valuable water resources. This is another example of Fargo leading the region through innovation and collaboration. So sincere thank you to the water reclamation staff. Engineering, this was a meeting I got to attend on Friday, August 22nd. I attended the NDSU Civil Construction and Environmental Engineering Retreat, along with members of Fargo city staff, including the both water directors. The retreat brought together city and county engineers, educators, and students to discuss how we can all work together to create smarter cities. Provided the welcome, and many students today are city engineers of the future who will plan, design, and help maintain Fargo's infrastructure. It was a wonderful brainstorming session and exchange of ideas, and I can tell you everyone there was much smarter than I ever will be. So thanks for hosting that, along with our city engineer. A reminder, the Fargo Youth Initiative is an advisory body to the city commission. It's made up of high school students from around our community, and they're scheduled to meet this Sunday, September 7th, at 1:00 for their first meeting of the school year. And we'll also be talking about kind of future structure as part of the boards and commission work we're doing. So there's a website there, backslash FYI, if you want more information. Here's the second water department update. As you know, we're installing new digital water meters. I still need appointment in businesses across the city. As of the 29th, we have almost 15,000 installations of the new meters, and that means almost half of the new meters have been installed to date, and the project's expected to be finished by the end of 2026. And then the last was this Sunday, I had the honor of attending the All African Festival held in downtown Broadway Square. The festival featured cultural displays, tree food, excuse me, free food, a kids' fun zone, a sports showcase, and a dance. And I also had the opportunity to meet and welcome to the crowd the New Miss Africa North Dakota. So those are my updates.
Good. I have nothing to report at this time. Commissioner Turnberg?
Reminder that the Northport Library is being repainted, and it will reopen on Friday.
Commissioner Pepcorn? We have two resident comments at this time. Robert Cost, if you want to start. Rob Cost?
I'm Rob Cost. I am a resident on 64th Avenue South. I sent an email to each of you this week. I don't know if you've had a chance to read that or not. It's in regards to the new on-and-off ramps on the 64th Avenue and I-29 interchange that is raising our concern as a neighborhood. I guess just a little history. When we were buying our property on 64th Avenue in 2018, 2019, I spent quite a bit of time with the city engineering department up here to understand what the growth was and what the plan was for 64th Avenue before we actually bought the property. I worked with Donald Crest and rezoned it from Egg into SR2. And I'd say I met with a lot of the neighborhood in the last week, talking to them to understand if they, what they understood the project to be as well. And it was all, all of us were unanimously communicated to by the city that it was going to be just an overpass or underpass, like 40th Avenue South. It caught us by surprise last week when it was presented, or we received a note in the mail, and telling us that they're planning an over, or on-and-off ramps on 64th Avenue. Since the overpass was commissioned the last couple of years, the traffic flow has obviously increased, which we knew it would. The speeding is absolutely terrible out there. I worked with Jeremy Gordon to get the speed signs installed out there. There's been numerous complaints filed with the police department, and I've talked to engineering department several times as well with Jeremy, and he says it's just a control issue. Well, the police come out there, they pick up tons of people. It's almost continuous, because I can see it out of my back window. When they're there, the speeding goes down for a couple hours, and it turns into a racetrack again. Anyways, I guess I have a petition. Right now, 23 people in the neighborhood that totally oppose, want to stop the progression of that interchange. I'm asking for all of you to come out and meet with us, my neighborhood, to experience it. I mean, there's railboxes on ramp, you know, 11 driveways that residents have to have.
Rob, you can talk later. You can meet with people and talk later. This is only two and a half minutes, so you can meet with the commissioners and give them your concerns. It's fine. But on this public speaking, you only get two and a half minutes, so. And we have your email address, so we can set up meetings. Okay. Christopher Cullen?
Yes, Christopher Cullen, Fargo resident again. And I wanted to bring up the subject of how the city commission operates, and some of the discourse that's been happening this year in particular. There's been some concerns to me about a coarsening of the discourse, and, you know, what you're seeing nationally, and I think it's a really, it's a big problem, because it discourages public participation. And it encourages the public to not trust government and not trust elected officials. And it makes the whole process negative. And we really need to keep it positive, because the whole purpose of this is to be cooperative and to help our community be a better, a better community. And in examining some of the policies of the cities, of the city, there's something called the Board of City Commissioners Governance Policies. And I see that this includes, and includes code of ethics. Specifically, there's a pledge of personal and professional conduct that includes the following: integrity, demonstrating, quote, "the highest standards of individual conduct", fair dealings, and consideration of the rights of others, unquote. Honesty, quote, "communicating respectfully", unquote. Respect, quote, "respect and act fairly toward all those I encounter", unquote. These are, this is a really good policy. I'm really impressed that the city came up with this, and I think the city commission approved this last year. There were changes to it. And I won't get into things I've seen that I think don't work, because I don't want to make this a negative discussion tonight. But lastly, with regard to the AI data center, I think both Fargo and Harwood should have encouraged public participation in it from the beginning, because we didn't know any...
Public session is over. We're adjourned.